We're supposed to call a board meeting to hear from firms who might like to help us with our superintendent search. We have four presentations tonight, each of thirty minutes in duration. We're starting a little bit late, so we'll give Ray and Associates until 5:35. We would like to stay on schedule. And I believe Ms. Michaels has told you that thirty minutes will include any question and answer that the board had, so if y'all want to time it accordingly. And if there's anything you want to ask us at any time, feel free to do that as well. So, again, thank you for coming. We have with us from Ray and Associates, Mr. Bill Newman, Mr. Al Johnson. So, gentlemen, take it away.
Thank you. Appreciate being here. Quickly, we want to get into this because the thirty-five minutes, or the 5:35, will escape us quickly. So, let us start by giving you these. And I'll let Mr. Johnson introduce himself.
Well, very briefly, my name is Al Johnson. I've been with the firm about ten years, about eight years. My background is sort of a hybrid background. I worked for Bristol Myers Squibb for twenty years, and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Maryland, and then went into education, worked for Hampton City Schools, and Charlotte Meckenberg Schools. So, I've had a sort of a different background. Worked with Ray, and done a number of searches across the country, including a number here in Tennessee.
All right. I'm Dr. Bill Newman. My background is education and military. I'll let you do the math. I spent twenty-seven years in the military, and thirty-three in education, so I probably started when I was about four. But twenty-one years in Army Reserve before I retired. I have been a teacher, coach, principal, superintendent in Iowa and Illinois. With that, I'd like to launch right into this, because I know thirty minutes will go quickly. We would appreciate you asking questions as we go through this, mindful of the time. There are some things we want to cover, but if you have a question, please ask it. I don't, I don't think we should wait till the end and make you bundle your questions. If, if you will, take a look at this item that's called "What Sets Us Apart," we're not going to cover all of this. We're going to leave some material with you, because your decision is coming next week, and we hope that things that we leave with you, you'll continue to peruse. But if you would turn that to page two, I do want to just very quickly mention to you that we have to have a picture of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, where our corporate office is, because when we're working in New York, and New Jersey, and so on, they really believe that Iowa has no buildings. It's all cornfields and the like. But that is where our corporate office is located. If you'll turn to page three, I'm going to highlight this. I'm not going to read it to you. It normally is presented in PowerPoint, but it takes longer, and we can do this by page a little quicker. We've been in this business since nineteen seventy-five, and longer than any search firm in the country, and successful during that time. We've been on, and none of our competitors can say what I'm about to say. We've never been bought out. We don't have any competing business interests. All we do is find educational leaders for schools. That's our primary and only business.
And that's important. I think about ninety-five percent of the corporation's business is superintendent searches. We will, at the request of school districts where we've placed the superintendents, do supplementary work in terms of support staff. But for the most part, our work is primarily superintendent searches.
Yeah, we've done, and we do some assistant superintendents, and there's, out in Virginia, they're asking us to find principals for them in a very large district, that sort of thing. But we have a relationship that's established through the superintendent search. If you'll look to the next page, that page four, and I'm going to slow down, take a breath here a little bit. Associate continuity simply means that we have people that work for us, that have worked for us for a long time, some from the outset of, of the firm itself. One of the things that you need to understand is that when we come to your district, Mr. Johnson and myself, we would both come to the district and continue to work with you. We don't come and sell a job and then disappear on you and have other people come and work. However, we do have a team assigned to this search that will do the background investigation. We'll talk about that in the other document in just a little bit. I've been with the firm, and I don't think I mentioned this, for going on twenty-two years. The last, let's see, fourteen is, is basically full-time. I'm the National Executive Director. I get to select pretty much where I want to go work, and I've worked in Tennessee, in some of your neighbors, and I don't know if you've taken a look at, at our record in Tennessee, but we've done Knoxville, Memphis City, Sumner County just recently, and Williamson County, and other, in, and other searches in, in neighboring states. Why that's important is that we understand what it takes to do a good search in, in the state of Tennessee. You're a sunshine state, and we know how to deal with that, to still get good candidates who are not afraid to apply, because we'll take good care of them. We talked to you a bit about, about that under candidate care. Diversity, I'll just mention that we are a diverse firm. Over forty percent of our folks are minority and women. We do have a database that Al's going to tell you just a little bit about.
We do have a database that's compiled from, mostly from the, the conventions that we, we attend, double A S A, and a number of state conventions. But we do not have a predetermined set of, of candidates. For example, if we were to get this, the only people that would come, come to database would be people who met the profile that we've developed with the school district.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that we're a very objective firm. When we come to a district, we have nobody in mind for this job until we come and work with you to build a profile for the position. We're going to talk to you about that a little bit later. It's important, under candidate care, that we maintain their interest throughout a search. Anybody can apply for a job, but to become a full-fledged candidate means meeting the profile that we establish, along with your community and, and yourselves. But we've got to keep them interested in the job, because maybe the best one is one that needs to be encouraged as, as we progress through the search, so that he or she is there at the end of the search, meeting the board in, in an interview, possibly a second interview. We're going to skip over, if you will, to the other document that you have in front of you, and just look at the first page. Some of it's repetitious, but I do want to call your attention to a couple of things on this. We have a full-time staff in the office. There's usually six or more people in our office. Why that's important? Candidates who have good jobs already are busy. They call our office. They really want to talk to somebody about the job, and those people will know your job. That's what we do. I authored this, this page some, some years ago, recent years, and when it went to press, it said a full-time office staff had came back from the full-time office staff, a highly qualified full-time office staff. They made that change, and it's a good change, and it's true. We want to be sure that you realize that we're out there recruiting for you at a, at a number of venues, one of which I'll mention very, maybe, Al, you were going to talk about Houston.
Yeah, I did briefly mention that the double A S A is in Houston this year, and we'll be attending that convention. We normally have a suite at the convention where we can sort of clandestinely, if you will, interview potential candidates, and we have a reputation. So, we, we see a number of candidates at that convention, get a chance to take a look at them personally, and see if they might be possible candidates for any searches that we're working on.
Well, keep in mind that a person that has a good job already at a national convention does not want to be seen in the job room. We're in one of the convention hotels with a suite of rooms. We're the only ones that do this, and we let people know that they can come and talk to us about the jobs we represent while they're at the convention. It's very effective. We usually have around ten people in the room, and we meet over two-hundred people in that fashion over those few days. What we'd like to do, though, we want to talk to you about the real heart of the matter in, in the search, and this is the process. If you'll turn in that document to page two, it's also in the document in kind of an abbreviated form, the document that we're leaving, but if you'll look at the process overview, I think it's important that we be a little more detailed in this, because we do some things that are unique and very effective. I want to tell you, when you think about having done the search in Knoxville, you know, right at the University of Tennessee, and Memphis City, Sumner County, and Williamson, all those districts were unique. I mean, none of those searches were the same. They were different in, in many respects. The outcomes were just different in many respects. However, that shows you that we are very flexible and can work with a district and meet their needs. In the, in the first part of this, building the profile, we like to interview board members individually, as well as work with the seven of you collectively. Here's why. Candidates almost invariably ask us two questions. One is, tell us about the board. Well, why not? We feel like we have a better feel for that, if we've had the opportunity to talk with you, and what you think the issues for this county really are. The other question that they ask is, what are the big issues in the district? Will my skill set match? So, but we'll also go out and meet with whatever public that you would designate, and if, and I realize I don't think, I read somewhere in, in the background of this, that none of you have really been involved in a director's search. Is that correct?
That's right.
So, we'll help you establish whatever input that you'd like, because we've done this so many times, that we'll get out to your community and to your staff, and bring back organized information that will help you in developing the profile. Keeping in mind that as we talk to people, we say, remember, this is the board's choice. And if you invite their input in that regard, we'll bring that information back to you. We'll finalize the characteristics for the position with you. We'll develop a timeline with you. We'll develop the recruitment materials, and I've got some samples here that I, I want to get around to you, and these are collected back from you later, because we don't have a whole bunch of those.
While he's passionate in where we'd get the job, one of the first, first things we would do with the board is develop that timeline. Now, we are, we are aware of the critical date of June fifteenth, and we don't anticipate a problem at all in, in being well ahead of that date.
At least a month.
But we would work with you in, in coming up with an agreed upon timeline. We also, in terms of doing the public meetings, we're the ones that would run those sessions as part of our expertise and, and really keeping what we stakeholder groups focus, and getting the information that you need in, in order to make a final determination regarding the profile.
Under here, it says, in that one box, it says "Board Updates." We'll provide you whatever conduit of information that you'd like through us as the search goes on, realizing that after we do that profile part, then we go into the recruiting part, and, and the advertising part, which there isn't a lot to report, and, and quite frankly, if I were to call you Chairman Burns and say, we've had thirty-three applicants for the position so far, I'd say, probably want to keep that number out of, out of the public information for the simple reason, we don't want the fortieth person saying, what chance would I have? So, I mean, we'll advise you as we go along the way. It's important that we are very aggressive in our recruiting. We have over a hundred and forty, I think it's a hundred and sixty associates across the country right now. One of the most effective ways of recruiting is for somebody to call somebody on the phone or tap them on the shoulder in a meeting and say, don't you hail from Tennessee? Would you not, would you not be interested in, in going back to, you know, the Nashville region, especially Murfreesboro, so you're not in all that traffic I came through today? So, the word of mouth, and by the way, that's the way a number of our people get paid. We pay finder's fees for finalist candidates that appear before the board. We do an in-depth screening of candidates, okay? That means anybody can apply, but they're not necessarily a good candidate just because they send their materials to us. Most of the good candidates, the really good ones, send their materials to us toward the end of the, the period, because they feel like the less time, the less exposure. And, and a number of them with good jobs would just as soon not have that well-known until they've established that communication in their, in their respective districts. We go on with background investigations. We have trained people that do background investigations, and it goes way beyond just checking references. To just check references, nobody gives us a bad reference. If they did, they wouldn't be smart enough to be the superintendent. In reality, what we do, one of the questions that we ask in our interview slate is, is there somebody, because we're hearing good things about the candidate, is there somebody that might disagree with you? And then we track that down to see what that was all about, because we can't have any surprises, for your sake or ours, on a candidate that we're proposing to you might be a good fit. So, one of the things that we provide for each board member is a written candidate report that, what you would see for each candidate that we think are the top candidates, is that candidate report, two to four pages, their letter of application, their application, their resume, and then letters of support. Each one of you would have that for each of the candidates that we would propose as semifinalists. Al will talk to you a little bit about the semifinalists, but we have something that we really want to talk to you about, because we have something that's unique and works very effectively in bringing a board to consensus, so that you're not all trying to piece this stuff together at the end. We actually have a metric that we use that helps you do that. Brings a board to consensus, and every board that I've worked with that has used it, and that's ninety-nine percent, have said, this was great, quite frankly. It's a forced choice matrix, which compares each candidate to the other, and as an end result, from each of the seven board members develops a ranking of those candidates. So, Al's going to talk to you a little bit about how we would present candidates, whether it would be a small number or a broader number, and...
Yeah, we would have a discussion with the board very early on in terms of the number of candidates that you would, would like to, to talk to, personally interview, or to review the reports on. Typically, in a search, we would normally bring somewhere in the area of eight to twelve candidates. And, but in a number of searches, the board has indicated, no, we don't want to see that many candidates. We want to see your top five candidates.
Tell them about Memphis.
Yeah, it happened in Memphis. And so, what they, we were going in, they said, we only want three candidates. And then, we had to sort of advise them that maybe that's not the smartest approach, because if you start off with three and one of them drops out, you have a problem. So, we, we ended up...
It's called a binary choice.
We ended up presenting them with six candidates, I believe, the final.
Right.
But that would be the board's decision in terms of how many candidates you wanted. In a typical search event, if you wanted to get a sort of a feel for the numbers, my guess is that in a search like this, we would probably have a total of about fifty to sixty, what we call completed files. That is, candidates who have gone through the entire process of filling out an application and providing references and so forth. And through our process with the team that we have, we would narrow, minnow that, that winner, that, you know, number of sixty to a first cut of about forty, and then would go from forty to about twenty, and then from twenty down to about ten, ten to twelve candidates. But again, it would be the board's decision.
Should the board tell us, because we're a sunshine state, and everything's going to be public from the get-go, to bring us, bring you the top candidates? The reason we, we talk to boards about that is, we've never chosen or hired a superintendent in all those years that we've been at a firm. And what does that mean? It means if we bring an array of candidates to you, and you work it down to those that you'd really like to interview, and then interview them, and then go through our metric again, now you're really good at it, because you've only seen like five candidates or so. It gets you down to what your top one or two candidates are. And by the way, if indeed, you know, and this has happened a number of times, in Memphis especially, they got, well, and, and actually Knox County, too, they got down to the top two candidates couldn't make a choice. They were both that good. And in that second round of interviews, we can provide you with some public input and some ways to do that, that will help you see them in front of your public.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
The files would be located in Iowa, is that correct? The actual applications?
Yes, sir.
Because we had some discussion, I don't know what the board's thinking now, about being uncomfortable with a firm eliminating people that we had never seen. Now, I'm not one who thinks it's reasonable that we're all going to go through sixty applications carefully.
And it might be ninety.
Yeah, right. And so, so the, the files are there.
Part of the process is that, I mean, you're hiring us for our expertise.
Right.
But when we, the, the, when we present you with our final candidates, let's say the number is sixty, we would have available all, we would give you the names of everybody that completed a file, so that you would be able to physically see who, who applied, completed the app, the process. We don't hold anything back from you.
No.
But what part of that winner in process is to get you to who we feel are the people that best fit the profile.
Okay.
Because if we had to go through all sixty, then we'd have to tell you our total investigation on each candidate.
Right.
That, that wouldn't be a productive, productive use of your time.
I want to be sure you understand, too, that the recruiting process, I may not have emphasized this as we went through this, we are coast to coast and border to border, and we don't know where that top candidate's coming from. And, and like Al mentioned earlier, we don't have a list that we bring to you and say, what do you think of these? We actually have done background on, and got that sixty down to nine, or whatever the number might, might be. If somebody on this board would say, but I know Dr. Jones applied for this job, and he's not in your nine, or in your six, or whatever, our answer would be, here's why. Here's how he compared to the profile as compared to these other candidates. Then if you said, but we still want to interview him or her, okay, this is your search, we're partners with you, and we're going to advise you all the way through it, but we're not going to keep you from doing something that you feel led to do very seriously.
So, of course...
We will, however, advise you against some of the Venus flytraps along the way.
And again, when, when the search is announced, board members will have contacts from various people about, I know the best superintendent in the world. The easy answer is, have him submit his application to Ray and Associates. Absolutely. Now, Al, in, when Bill talked about this matrix process, I'll go always this, and with this board, it would be to have a seven to zero vote on the candidate. And I think, we think that this is what that process will accomplish, to have a seven-zero, so that everybody is comfortable with the final candidates.
Yeah, Knox County, by the way, the, the individual took the job on a five-four vote. The four votes were votes out of loyalty to an internal candidate, but the last time I checked, most votes were going in his favor, nine-oh, or seven-two on issues. And he came out of Boston, by the way. He's doing a great job up there.
Throughout the process, we will again make it clear to anyone that we are talking with, that it is the board's decision on this candidate. Some districts toward the end of the process want to set up a process where the public gets an opportunity to meet the two or three finalists, and that's, that's fine with us, and we will moderate that process as well. But throughout the process, we will always make it clear, the board is seeking your input in order to make a final decision, but it is the board's...
We tell them, we don't vote, only the board does.
Right.
Okay? If you'll look at page four, there's just one thing quickly I'd call your attention to here, or a couple, really. You may decide to do a site visit, and we'll help you do that the proper way. If you've never done a site visit to a superintendent's district before, there are some ways to do it, and some ways not to do it. To walk through the town and talk to Floyd the Barber, and Mike the Mechanic, and, and so on, it's not the right way to do it. You tell us who you'd like to talk to, and we'll have them standing there, waiting to be interviewed by you when you get there. I mean, quite frankly, that's the way to do it. If you say, we want to talk to an elementary principal, here are the elementary schools, which one? Then if you do a site visit, that person would be, would convene with you to have that interview. We assist with the contract development, and on this next page, this is something that's unique and, and special, that we provide school boards, this is on page five of the second document. It's called facilitating the transition period. We provide you with a board self-assessment survey, and we provide that to you. You fill that out individually. It is calibrated into a spreadsheet, a document, that shows how you perform, in your mind, as a school board in nine different areas of school board functioning, including board superintendent relations. And that's especially important in getting off to the right start and establishing that, that positive relationship, okay? On the very final page of that, I'm not going to read our mission statement to you. You can read that, and I hope you do, because it's been ours for a long time, but we are student advocates. We know that anybody that comes here to be the director of schools for Rutherford County is certainly going to have an impact on kids, and we want it to be positive, as long as he or she is here.
So, with that, that leaves us about five minutes to make sure...
About three minutes for questions?
We answer any questions that any...
What's your fee?
Stated in here was twenty-five-five. If one meeting, we reduce that by a thousand dollars. If the one meeting that we call the second meeting with the board, if we do that by Skype or by teleconference...
Okay.
We knock a thousand dollars off of that. So, and a lot of, a lot of people have done that, because it doesn't take very long, about thirty minutes.
Okay.
So, twenty-four-five, and that's in our proposal.
Is, okay, just missed that.
It is.
Sorry. Questions, we don't have much time, so they got to be concise.
We've done the search process already. We acknowledge that. How naive am I to think that we are not a good enough community, a good enough school system, that we will not attract through the, all the networking now that's out there? We throw this open, that, that people will not flock to this wonderful place.
Oh, I, I think your question is stated in the negative, but I want to put it in the positive, okay?
Well, I'm, I'm...
I really think this will...
I'm being facetious, obviously.
I think this will be a very attractive place. I don't have any doubt that people will want to, want to apply and really take a serious look at this.
This would be a plum job.
Well, I, 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 maybe I didn't state it the right way. Without the assistance of any search firm, what's, what's going to not allow us to, to have a, a bevy of good candidates come to us?
You mean doing it on your own?
That's great.
That's a, that's a thing that many boards ponder, but the difference is, the only thing you can really do is throw some ads out in the paper and, and hope you get good people, and then what do you do with them, if they're good, or if they're not good, or if they're average? That's why you really trust a, a firm like us to do the background and be sure that we're out there recruiting to bring people in. There's a difference between recruiting and just advertising. There's a difference between recruiting and just advertising.
Sure.
The only thing boards can really do besides make a few phone calls. The problem with that however is you make a phone call to somebody and they think they got the job.
Because you're a board member and and I don't think you have, the board doesn't have the networks of contacts that we have. You know, you're paying for the expertise, I, you know, I, we're in this business.
Question over here.
We know the business thoroughly.
Aaron.
If there's a specific issue that we we recognize in our school system. Is it appropriate, fair, at what point in the process can we ask, what would you do in this situation to a candidate? And is it possible to give them a framework of that's of that scenario and say, bring your prepared answer?
Yeah, that's certainly possible. The the thing that uh and I appreciate that question because that's the very thing we wanna get when we interview you individually. What are the critical issues in the district? Okay, and to have a written answer. If they sit down and do it while you're watching, that's one thing. But um it's probably better if you take our lead. We will provide you with interview questions, but we'll customize those interview questions to the very thing that you're talking about. That issue.
Okay. We are out of time now. As long as we all understand, if we go over, we have to go over for everybody. So go ahead, Wayne.
Um based on what our salary.
It's a good question.
At this. At this point, uh are you, are you? Thinking that we'd still get a good candidate pool based on what we pay presently?
What you pay presently, I think the last I saw was a hundred and twenty-six thousand. It may be different than that.
Thirty, about one thirty, right Joyce? I just noticed in the.
Ten eleven, it was one twenty-six something, I I saw that. I don't know what other perks come along with that and that's that's really hard to discover quite often. I think you've gotta be in tune with the market. And the market, we'll bring you marketing information so that you can see that. You decide the salary and we recruit to that effect.
That was clear as we looked at the.
But your answer was, I mean, your question was, will we get candidates? Yeah. You might also ask, is there a difference between a hundred and thirty thousand dollar candidate and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar candidate? There probably is. Right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you. Did we get everybody's questions?
I think we did. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to being back in Tennessee. I like driving over here actually. Better than flying in Nashville.
Have you been to Oklahoma?
Many times, yes. Good friend of mine was a superintendent there, he worked for us. He lives in Omaha now.
Well, we hope to have a decision next week and Ms. Michaels will uh let you know.
I I sent around those uh one, those.
I think the run on the, on the end there.
The thing I didn't mention about that is I'm picturing a lot is that we develop this style, saves you money and it gets the story of.
Yeah.
Single page.
Actually, yeah. Hand it out or whatever and we'll be gone. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thirty minutes goes so fast.
It does go by in a hurry.
We've got a lot to tell you.
Great, thank you.
Alan, do you want your bottle of water?
No.
Okay, then I'll remove it. For the next folks. Thanks again.
Tens of thousands. Yeah. Well, here's a man who needs no introduction, I think, uh to this board, Mr. Randall Bennett from Tennessee School Board Association. So Randy, thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting us.
And I think Ms. Michaels has told you uh the game plan here, thirty minutes, including Q and A. So however you wanna handle it. The floor is yours.
Well, I better handle it efficiently because the guy coming behind me said, he says, six o'clock, I'm coming in.
Actually, you have till six oh nine now.
He sounded, he sounded very seriously and I believe it. Um just a couple of things before we get started now. The the packet that I've given you is the information that's located on our website. You may have already accessed that information and taken a look at it. And if that's the case, it might be that we could do more Q and A than anything else. Uh I would like to say that since nineteen, the list goes back to nineteen ninety-nine. I don't know if you looked at that online, but we've done over fifty superintendent searches for school systems here in Tennessee since nineteen ninety-nine. And uh as I look over them, I've been involved in quite a few in the last six, eight to ten years myself. One thing I think that makes our service unique is that the Tennessee School Boards Association only provides the services for its members. We don't do this for anyone else. We're not a non, we're a nonprofit organization. We're not out there trying to sell this service to anyone. What we found out early on was that because superintendents come and go at a fairly broad interval. School boards don't really have the means to conduct the search themselves. It's very difficult to to deal with all the paperwork and the processing and and screening of candidates and things like that. And so we developed this process way back, long before I went with that TSBA. To assist our members as far as helping them with that superintendent search process. And we've had a lot of experience doing that over the years and and I, we're very pleased with what we've been able to accomplish. And I have a unique perspective on this service because in the early nineties, I was actually a consumer of this service. When I was a member of the board in Johnson City. Our superintendent informed us that he did not want a contract renewal and he told us this right after Christmas. And so we began looking and we're doing, we did exactly what you're doing here tonight, you know, contacting firms, getting information like that. And ultimately, we went with TSBA and they conducted a good service for us back then. And we uh, we chose a good superintendent who stayed for a number of years in Johnson City. He stayed longer than I did. I moved down here. But anyway, just a a word or two about the packet that I've got in front of you. I think on the first page, the most important thing, once you decide to get going, is to adopt a timeline. And the procedures that you're gonna use. Because very often in a superintendent search, you, if you if you don't have a good plan, it tends to go astray. So if you decide, we're gonna do it this way, this is gonna be our timeline, these are gonna be our dates, it helps keep you on path. It keeps everybody on the path and you really get accomplished what you want to. Now, I'm assuming that you're interested in input from the community. Uh I don't know. But one of the things that we recommend and we do in our plan too is community meetings. We conduct those and try to get input from the community. We also, if you look on our website right now under superintendent search services, we've got a a forum up. That uh community members who can't make it to the meetings can fill out online. We're doing one for Clarksville Montgomery. As a matter of fact, Dr. Grissom is in Clarksville Montgomery tonight talking to them about the very same thing. So they're doing that and we can get information online as well as conduct community meetings. Because a lot of people do not like to come out to meetings at night. They'd much rather just fill out a a form online and so that's available too. That input is good in helping establish the criteria that you all want to adopt for a superintendent. And the bottom line is, when you start finding out what your community want, I think it goes a long way. Towards helping you determine which qualities in the superintendent you think are most important. Uh looking on at page two, once we conduct the uh the community meetings, we will come back, do an interim report. Make recommendations to you as far as criteria go. And once you adopt that, we will publish brochure both on paper and online. Get that information out to a lot of different places. You can see uh on the bottom of page two at number five there, the, some of the different places that we put that information out. We get hits on our websites from as far away as Alaska. As a matter of fact, we've had Alaska superintendents apply for uh positions here. So that's been kind of interesting over the year. If you want us to go to national publications, we can do that at whatever cost they charge to do that. Arrange for the ads to go with national publications as well. But the key thing at that point in time is for us to process those credentials. To get those in, to make sure that everything that we've asked for, the candidates are getting. So we can do an apples to apples comparison of the candidates. Now, it used to be in Tennessee that if you hired an outside organization or firm to conduct these searches, those applications were, could be closed. The law has changed, the open records law basically indicates now that regardless of who conducts a search for Board of Education. All materials received in connection with a superintendent search in Tennessee are subject to open records. And so uh that information can be had by the media and the public if they're interested. I don't know if you all were aware of that or not. I see a look of surprise on the face for two. Question about that?
Well, I'll just, I don't know whether I. Felt this from the the previous group which were outside of the state. That there may be, there were some, that that, they didn't say this, but I I got some impression that maybe if an application went to them. Rather than contacting us directly, it it created some bit more of a air for the person who applied. That they would not be as recognized or as subject to that.
They are subject to the same law as anyone else, including firms here in Tennessee. So uh whether or not they, whether or not it would be easy to access that information, I don't know, but they are subject to the law as well. And uh if you're interested, of course, we can get you that law or your attorney can find that for you. It's in the open records law to show you that. I think that's important because the media can sometimes, i- i- if you're doing this with a firm and and they're not being forthright. You can get some criticism in the press and that's not good. The last thing you need is is criticism from your press about not being open in your process and, you know, not following Tennessee law. So I think it's important to make sure that you make allowances for that as you go through the program. Um after the pro.
Excuse me.
Yes.
You don't recruit then?
Yes, we do recruit.
I mean, and the last group made a big point of saying how they actively recruit as opposed to advertise.
No, as a matter of fact, we will talk to people. Because the only thing that's subject to the open records law is formal applications and materials that come in. We may talk to people without getting that material and determine, yes, they may be a good fit or no, they may not be a good fit. And they might never submit. Now, that information is not subject to to disclosure. And we do a lot of talking with folks in different places like that. But once they file that application, once they mail it to us, then it does become a public record. Any additional questions about that? Uh based on your criteria, we will put together a screening committee who would take a look at all the applications. And we would bring back to you whatever number of folks that you'd like to interview. Based on the criteria, we're gonna recommend to you the people that we think best suit your needs and what you say you are looking for in a director of schools. Now, when we bring those to you, we'd ask you to look at them. If you're not happy with them, of course, we can go through the others. At that point in time, we come back with a final report. We're gonna turn over all the files to you at that point in time. So that you could take a look at them if you wish. But the bottom line is, uh we'll make the recommendations of the candidates we think stand head and shoulders above the rest. And, you know, we'll put together for you an interview guide with recommended question based on the criteria that you have. Uh you can, of course, modify that interview guide and put whatever additional questions you want in. Uh all interviews, as you know, have to happen in an open meeting in a situation like this. So the 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 public can come to see what uh, to see what the candidates are like. Uh we will check their references, but on page five, we also recommend that uh you do some calling on your own. I think it's uh, it's a good thing to call the community and talk to board members where a person is a superintendent now. Talk to some other folks like that, just to get a feel for a candidate yourself. And and then, once you've gone through the first interview and possibly had several people back for a second interview. You may want to do some votes to pare down the number of candidates to two or three. And then concentrate on those and determine whether or not you've got one candidate that's moving toward the top. And somebody that you're really happy with. Then, of course, you get to that point, some negotiation as far as contract issues, and then you're ready to announce the uh selection. And have the person start uh on the date that uh that suits you all. I think you all are looking for, is it June, July first? June first?
Well, we need the contract completed by June fifteenth.
Contract complete, yeah, because you can't do it after that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. I know, blackout period on that. Uh on page six, you see the breakdown as far as the cost. Uh Plan One does not include the community meetings. Plan Two includes everything in Plan One, including the community meetings. And we also would sit down individually with each board member to get your input privately. In other words, I would sit down with each of you, separate from all the others, and we'd sit down and talk and I could get your perspective on this as well too. And uh we'll take all of that into consideration as we do that. Uh again, we recommend criteria based on what happens in the community meeting. The suggested timetable for searches you'll find on page seven. Uh as far as where you go in the, in the uh week of the search. Four to six months is a normal span for a search, particularly when you've got the time. So you all are in a great position right now, starting the first part of January, to accomplish that and get it done with that, with plenty of uh time to spare. We've done them in as little as two months, but I'm here to tell you that's an awful rush to get that done. And and sometimes it discourages candidates who sometimes like to sit on the fence to the last minute. Uh it amazes me that once we put it out, we get a nibble or two initially. And then as the deadline approaches, that's when things start flying into our office, different uh, different uh applications and so on and so forth. But this is just a basic timeline. And once uh, once you chose us to do this, if you look on the next page on page eight. We would put together a timeline with the specific actions that need to take place and also specific with the dates, make suggestions on that. And come back and talk to that, talk to you about that and make sure that we've got a timeline and a schedule that would work with everybody's calendar. Uh one thing that we suggest, of course, is community meetings and you'll see a sample schedule over on page nine. We like to break down the the employees of the system into several subgroups like that and give them an opportunity to come in and talk to us and get their input too. Because they're a very important group of people. And we recommend what we've got down there is a schedule because it's just worked out that way over the years. We find that we need to get the bus drivers well after all of the uh, all of the uh routes are run and all the kids are in school. So they're at ten o'clock while we try to get central office staff supervisors and principals earlier in the morning. We also recommend a luncheon to include county commission, business leaders, uh and you as a board of education. We like to get the cafeteria workers in later in the afternoon, once they finish lunch and have an opportunity to get here. Because it's some pretty good distances from certain parts of this county back here, you know, to do a meeting like that. And of course, the teachers, we have to do after they finish their workday, so a little bit later. And then community, community meeting later on the evening like that. So that's a sample schedule. We can modify that in any way you want. We found that that particular schedule worked pretty well. Uh the last two pages are a sample application, the form that we put together that would allow us to do any background checks and different things like that. To receive information about a superintendent. You may have your own employment application that you want filled out and there's certainly nothing wrong with that. But this would satisfy the basic needs as far as getting permissions to get the kind of documentation that we want. And and that's basically the uh gist of the book. Um what questions can I answer for?
On the. Do you come to us with a list of semifinalists or ranking or what do you do once the, all the applications are in?
If you tell us that you'd like to see three, four, five, six candidates, we will look at the list and we will get a committee together to look at this. People involved in higher education, people involved in State Department of Education, people that have input, you know, as far as the state. And hopefully some people that know your county here, know the situation. And they'll look through the candidates and we'll, we'll get out, flesh it all out, talk to all of our sources, not only here, but in other states. And find out what we can about them and recommend to you the candidates we think best fit the criteria that you've selected. And we'll come back to you and recommend those candidates. Now, it's your call as to whether or not you decide to interview that group or decide to make modifications yourself. That's up to you as a board. But based on our investigation and our looking into it and our committee sitting down to really talk about that. Uh that, we're gonna recommend the thing, the people that we think would be a best fit for you here.
Okay. Wayne?
This is kind of a different angle question. What should we expect as a board once this process is started? How is the community going to approach us? What have you seen in the past or, you know, are we gonna get phone calls from people saying, hey, uh, you know. I I know, I know this great guy over here or this, this wonderful lady over here. I mean, what can we expect as a board? I mean, what can we expect as a board going through this four-plus-month process?
You may get some of that, but generally, that doesn't happen. If you've got anybody that does say, I've got somebody that's great, we're going to ask in the community meetings, do you have somebody you think should be, that we should contact? And what we do, any names and addresses we get from that, we invite those folk, the folks to submit credentials, and we screen them along with everyone else. My thought would be, if someone says to you, I've got the great guy for this, the great girl for this, you, you send them toward our website and get the brochure, and they can start the process just like everyone else. I don't think you'll get much of that. Generally, you don't.
Aaron?
You conduct a prospective superintendent academy, and we talked a little bit about recruitment. How does that academy and people who have been through it, how does that weigh into the process, if at all? Does, does that give you additional insight that you have used in the past?
We have, on occasion, put some of those folks in searches, and we have several of them right now that are superintendents around the state. It's not an automatic end. We don't put them in, if they're not a good candidate, we're not going to put them in if they don't fit your situation. But if we find, we get an opportunity to work with these folks on a, on a long-term basis. I know I spent an entire day with them myself, talking about school law, so I get a feeling for what kind of person they are. We've got a former superintendent who's the mentor for the group, and he stays with them every meeting, really gets to know them well, and he is just very useful in telling us what each person's like, what their strengths and weaknesses are, and it enables us to help, to, to help pair those people with jobs that might be good for them. With a system this large, you may not want someone who's not, doesn't have previous superintendent experience. And I don't know what your policy says. Some of your own criteria, you may want someone with certain degrees, you may want someone with prior superintendent's experience. All of that has to be taken into account, too. If a board of education tells us, we don't want anybody with, that doesn't have a doctorate degree, then we don't send them anybody, even though we've got good candidates with master's degrees. If your criteria is hard and fast, we want a doctorate degree, well, then we only send you folks with doctorate degrees. It's an, it's an automatic exclusion in a situation like that. So your criteria, what you adopt as far as what you're actually looking for as far as qualifications, as well as criteria suggested from the community are going to go a long way to filter out the ones that just don't match up.
Terry?
What counties have you recently did as far as searches for?
I always get that question, so I print it out with this. The last one we finished in two thousand and eleven was Loudoun County. They're up Lenore City. We also did Cleveland down in Bradley County. We did Bedford County, of course, last year, and we did Alcoa last year. Before that, we did Fayette County, Sullivan County, Athens in two thousand and ten, Henry County. Going on down, we did Anderson County in two thousand and nine, Bristol City, two thousand and nine, Sullivan County, two thousand and eight, Dixon County, two thousand and eight, Marshall County, two thousand and eight. We did Jackson-Madison County, two thousand and six, Wilson County in two thousand and six, and I'm happy to say that same superintendent's still there, too. Does a great job. Robertson County, we did in two thousand and five, Williamson County, two thousand and four, Clarksville-Montgomery, two thousand and one, and of course, they have hired us to do their search now, so we're actively working with Clarksville-Montgomery County. And I'm trying to pick systems that are close, closer to the size of Rutherford County in that area, but this list is on our website. I would encourage you to go download that and take a look for yourself as to who we've actually done the service for.
Most have stayed around, I guess?
Most of the time, yeah.
The ones you'll pick or?
We occasionally, we had a situation with Sullivan County where they hired from within. He was one of the candidates, and we, we recommended him as a finalist, but then, for whatever reason, it didn't work well. And we've got a guarantee, if, within a certain period of time, if it doesn't work out and the superintendent does go, we'll repost it and get your candidates back in at no additional cost. And Sullivan County was the only system that I think we've, we've had to do that guarantee with in the last six to eight years. But they got a great superintendent that matches him really well, a gentleman from Williamson County, and he is over there now, Sullivan County, so.
What brings us differently than I did the last time you said we got?
Clean it up a little bit.
It's interesting that you mentioned Dixon County, and I think I recognize here three other counties where maybe, and on Dixon County, Johnny Chandler was the, is the director of schools there now, who's a Dixon County person. It, it's interesting, oftentimes it, search firms are used, and then it comes back to a local candidate.
And I'm going to talk to them.
So the question is, and you know this system as well as practically what we do here, you know, the good system, good community, you know, I'm, I'm of opinion that we will get a good list of candidates if we just decide to advertise it rather than even recruit it out and so forth. Because it oftentimes comes back to that local person, and maybe in this situation.
Yeah. I'm of the opinion that you'll get a good group of candidates, too. This is a good-sized system. You've got a lot going on here. You're doing great with the state standards. You're doing great with test scores. Report cards are looking good. Why would somebody not want to come here? Now, I will tell this to you, and I tell it to every group I talk to. If you have a really strong internal candidate that all of you think you'd be happy with, don't waste your time and money doing a search, just hire them. If, if you really do. Now, if you don't, if you're really looking out there for someone else, then do it. I, I don't think it's worthwhile, it's a worthwhile effort to do a search for the sake of public appearances, because you, as a board of education, have the authority to hire whomever you please to be your superintendent of schools. And if you've got a great internal candidate, then hire that internal candidate. If you think you might be able to find somebody else, you like someone with more experience for a school district this size, someone who's got a few years under their belt, then the only way you're going to be able to do that is to conduct a search and bring in folks from the outside. And I'm going to talk to Dixon County next week because they're in that situation again.
That's what I heard yesterday.
Yeah, they are. So, but Johnny was around for a long time before he decided to retire.
Wayne, you want to ask your question? I think it's a good one.
I don't know if I want to now. Based on what our salary situation is presently, will our county attract good, qualified candidates at the, at the present?
What is your salary situation?
I think it's one thirty with a, with a car allowance.
For a system this size, I think you're going to have to consider going up, honestly. I, I mean, I could sugarcoat it and say that will do it, but there, there are a lot of systems out there that are really not as big as this system, they're paying more than that. But I, if I were you, I'd look at it as salary negotiable and not try to nail it down to a specific number. But I'd be open to the possibility, the fact that it may take a little bit more to attract a really high-quality candidate. Was that the answer you got from the last one?
It wasn't as straightforward as you said.
Well, I know you all. I'm a little more straightforward than some, than some are in a situation like that. And I'm not a private business trying to make a profit. We're just trying to help our boards with this service. So honestly, a hundred and thirty, there, there are much smaller systems around that are paying more than that right now. So something to think about.
Yes, sir. Other questions? Aaron?
We do community meetings to get community information, is their board survey to, to develop the criteria that we're going to advertise and such. And then, along with that, you offer superintendent evaluation, but that kind of comes after the fact.
Right.
Would it be reasonable to have the expectations and the measurement device, you know, as part of the recruitment process?
Well, I, I think really more is part of the employment contract process. I think once you get down to the point of thinking, this is the person we want, that's when you need to start talking to that person about your goals and expectations and, and working the evaluation toward matching that and making sure that the director understands that these are the things we expect of you for your one, two, three, so on and so forth. I think it's a little early in the process to do that now. I mean, your goals would certainly be good information for those folks, you know, what your system goals are, where you're trying to go, what you're hoping to accomplish, what your all's vision is as a board. But until you find that right person, match them up, I think an evaluation instrument at that early in the process is a bit premature.
Okay. Other questions? Well, Mr. Bennett, we appreciate you coming.
Gentlemen, good luck to you. Whatever you decide to do, if you decide to go with another firm, we're more than happy to put a link on our website so that people that are looking for that will find that firm as well. We'll, we'll link to your website. We don't link to the other organization's website, but we'll certainly link to your website, and I know you'll have a link on there to, to the other two. So we're more than happy to do that if you choose someone else.
Appreciate, appreciate that.
All right.
All right. Thanks for coming. All right. Bye-bye. Do you all need a break? Let's take a five-minute break. Joyce, we're going to take five. Don't Terry, though.